I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for December 19th, 2022 to order. Would you, actually Larry, start?
Not that it's too serious to note, but I just want to have a moment of silence for the New England Patriots.
They live in the land of the undead. I'm not sure that...
Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, I do have a public comment.
Thank you. Public comment and announcement. I'll start with Larry.
Thank you, Michael. A couple of days ago, we got notice that Brian Howes passed away. Many of you know him, that he was the director of UMass Dartmouth, Massachusetts Estaran Project. He had tremendous background. We, some of you know, I went to, I got my PhD at UMass Amherst. He worked at UMass Dartmouth. And so we, during the years we worked together, we spent a fair amount of time arguing about which was the better school, UMass Amherst or UMass Dartmouth. But Brian was the intellectual background behind the MEP, when he got funding from the state. He's the one that determined that we could, we could focus on the problem. And rather than sewer all of Harwich, which was the initial, and all Cape, which was the initial discussion, he developed first the biological data to develop what we now call the total maximum nitrogen daily load, and then developed into models and so on to how much we'd have to sewer. And so in Harwich, I know Dan's here, and we're kind of readjusting this some, and DEP is trying to force this the other way, by the way. But with his input and broad discussion, our comprehensive wastewater management plan then was developed to sewer half of the Harwich rather than 100%. Tremendous savings due to his expertise and background and able to put that together and talk to all, and actually communicate that in a way that was reasonable as well. As you know, even a few weeks ago, we argued some about Cold Brook. Because my fear was, based on data that we'd been, scientific information that I knew ahead of that, the understanding was that if we ran the water through deep and wide ponds, it did a great job of removing nitrogen, better than marshes were. And the plan that he came up with recently, with help of others, but was to do part of that, but also extend the marsh influence on that. I'm not sure anyone else, other than Brian, could have convinced me that that was, had great merit and we should explore it. He would be sorely missed. He was the intellectual basis for a lot of our discussions.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
The only time I'll ever beat link at anything. Couple of things. Sorry.
I don't know if that's going to see it, I mean Caleb, but hopefully. Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Couple of things. As many of you know, we did a number of things this holiday season. And yesterday, we ended the Festival of Trees fundraiser for the Family Pantry. And I am happy to announce, we exceeded last year and made a record of $12,540 that we will be donating to the Family Pantry to go back to our community. And this is thank you to many who donated trees, as well as all that bid, even up until four o'clock yesterday. Also, in front of the podium... Caleb, can we see it? All right, good. Is the new cover for the 2023 Harwich Magazine. The theme this year, or next year, will be reflecting Harwich's seven villages. So we'll share the past, the present, and future in many of the articles. For anyone there, and then... Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Go ahead, Don.
So Cindy, you're blowing past Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and Happy Holidays, and going straight to the summer.
Always thinking ahead.
Good evening. Link Hooper, DPW Director. It's my pleasure to announce that Mass DOT has finally called a 25 design public hearing for the sidewalk project. As some of you that's been sitting up at the front table a while can remember, back to 2014, it was the board's desire to build the sidewalk on Route 28, which is under the jurisdiction of Mass DOT. We were promised, or the board, the town was promised way back when, that they would build a sidewalk the next time they were in the neighborhood. Well, around 2018, there was a renewed push by the board to get real about this. We appropriated some design money, and we've been chugging along ever since. And this is the timeframe. So the design public hearing has already been posted on the town's website. It is going to be on January 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Community Center Multipurpose Room. And again, that's for the sidewalk project that's been in the queue a very, very long time. It's a standalone building, a sidewalk on just the south side of the road. So you know how they are promulgating the complete streets these days, all over the place. We got a lot of design exceptions to have this one built. A lot of work's done into that, and DOT is really, or District 5 felt like they've really partnered with the town on this one. I have a second design public hearing called, and this one is going to be exactly a week later, on January 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Community Center again. And this is for the, what we're referring to as the West Harwich Tip Project on Route 28. The Harwich portion goes from the Dennis Town Line to the Herring River Bridge. This has been in the queue now for probably four years. We've been working along it. The design public hearings, and this one's a joint project with the Town of Dennis, that will clean up that whole mess of an intersection that queues up in the summertime for 20 minutes or so. These public hearings are where Mass DOT, these are going to be in person, and Mass DOT is seeking public input, so they can massage the projects. They really want to hear from you. They have a stenographer take down all the notes. If you're unable to make one of the meetings, they accept public comment for 10 business days after the public hearing, which will be read into the record.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Excuse me. The sidewalk public hearing is the day after Martin Luther King's Day. And so it's likely that we'll have a selectmen's meeting that Tuesday, since I was wondering if we could consider starting that an hour late, so we could at least attend an hour of the, I think this is an important hearing for us to know about.
Any objection from the board?
No.
Joe?
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Patrick Otten, East Harvard. Just a quick question for Link. Is there any discussion about bike lanes in the proposal? Is that something we can bring up during the meetings?
I'm certain Mass DOT is open to any and all public comments. However, this project specifically was limited to one side because of the right-of-way impacts. Meaning, to make 28 any wider along that and increase shoulders or a sidewalk on the other side would necessitate private property takings.
Thank you, Link.
Hi, everyone. Just wanted to let everyone know, the last program of this calendar year will be happening tomorrow night at the Community Center. It is the Solstice Summer, Solstice Winter Drumming, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's free. Just stop by. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Katie O'Neil. Just want to let everyone know that there'll be a QPR Suicide Prevention Training on January 4th, from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And again, on January 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. If anyone is interested, it's either drop-in or you can register by calling the COA.
Thank you, Don.
If I may, I went to one of those like six weeks ago, two months ago, when it was held before. It was, it was interesting, kind of depressing, by the way. But we should, I hope a lot of people go, because everyone needs help.
Bree Smith from Outer Cape does it, and she's fantastic. She's really a great resource.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? One announcement is the Board of Selectmen's, this is the last Board of Selectmen's meeting for 2022. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the board minutes for the selectmen's meetings of 11:21, 22, and 12:05, 22.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, Joe. New business discussion on free cash certification and financial status. Do you want to open that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board, and everyone here assembled. In your packet, you will see memorandum from me to you folks, copying the Finance Director and the Assistant Town Administrator on proposed uses of free cash. Second, you'll see the DLS primer on free cash, the actual certification documents that the Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue used to establish our free cash levels. And then last in the packet is the board's policy on free cash. As the board knows, we, I think we're still at the number presented by DLS, seven, thank you. The number that we're working from is $7,488,155. My commentary to the Finance Director, we know that there might be a slight modification to that as DLS goes through our certifications that we do at this time of year. So as you folks know, in the draft capital plan that was presented at your meeting on December 5th, presently, there is 5.29 million set aside for items and free, excuse me, in the capital plan for fiscal year '24. And then the remainder is suggesting that we split it equally to our OPEB or other post-employment benefits account, or fund, excuse me, and the stabilization fund. And then beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure the Finance Director and I will endeavor to answer any questions you have about that free cash certification.
Thank you. Larry, questions or comments?
No comments.
Don?
Yeah, I'd kind of like explanation. I know the schools gave back money, but that's an extraordinary amount. I mean, normally, we plan on 3 million, something like that. Seven is really high. So before we leave the subject, what would it have been without the refunds?
Can you speak to that? As the Finance Director approaches, I will offer, I'm not aware that the school matters impacted on that number so, as much as the delta between estimated receipts and actual receipts, operating balance at the end of the year, articles unspent, and budgets unspent. But having said that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director.
Those amounts affect FY '23, not FY '22. So this is based on FY '22 funds.
That's kind of what I thought. Sometimes I ask questions, I already know the answer to. But the problem that I have ultimately, if this is a repetitive thing, it just seems like the express track to buy stuff. When, because nobody's going to complain about this at a town meeting, it's a good thing. It's free. Free cash, we know, isn't free. I mean, it's collected taxes, kind of, we had talked about returning some of that to taxpayers. It just, I don't want to see it as a recurring theme, because I personally can't support it as a recurring theme to have an excessive amount of free cash ultimately. To have some is good, because you need things, and you need to be able to get certain things without there being blowback that we can't really afford them in a given year. But when you get to the point where it's that way a lot, we have to have a discussion about why.
I agree.
Thank you, Anne Marie. And we, this is a recommendation in the packet from Joe, not anything that we've discussed yet or voted.
No, I get it. But I just wanted to plant my flag in the field.
Agreed. Mary?
No comments.
None. Anything from Joe, anything you'd like to add?
Well, just that, you know, part of what we're seeing is a result of discussions that we have at the board meeting and joint meeting with the Finance Committee, as we develop the budget. And I would caution anyone to recall the discussions this time last year, where we were talking about revenue estimates. Again, as it says in your policy, as we know it from Division of Local Services, the delta between what's estimated and what actually comes in is the biggest source of that free cash. And so when we had the summer that we had, one of the greatest, well, if you're a tourist, one of the greatest summers on weather. I know we've got landscapers tonight that have difficulty with the lack of rain. But, you know, with sunshine comes money. And so as you folks enter into your budget deliberations for fiscal year '24, we should all be mindful of that delta between estimated and actual. And then the rest of it is really just something that Anne Marie and I are already focused on. And that's making sure that what gets appropriated by town meeting for operating budgets is legitimately needed and spent, and that the articles are not carried over, et cetera. So there is a way for us to handle this. But again, the first criteria in that evaluation is estimated versus actuals.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone in the public with any comments? We'll be taking this up many more times before the budget. Next up is a request to send a letter, a request from a resident to send a letter to Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, MDAR, requesting non-use of glyphosate by Eversource in its vegetation management plan. Sorry. Patrick?
Yes.
If you would. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Good evening, Board and everyone. Yes, so currently, MDAR, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, is soliciting public comment, they're asking for public comment on Eversource's Vegetation Management Plan, which is a five-year plan being submitted now. So Eversource, MDAR is saying, please, give us your comments on this. And I'm here before you to ask that the Town of Harwich also write MDAR and give your reaction, response to Eversource's Vegetation Management Plan. The plan itself's available on Eversource's website. It's about 70 pages long, so it's a lot of reading. But public comment is being solicited. You can write MDAR yourself. It's due by December 3rd, if you're actually writing, okay? If not, you can email. I can read the address now, so it's public information. Is that appropriate?
Excuse me, December 3rd?
December 23rd. Yeah, excuse me, 23rd, okay. So if you're writing, it's to Clayton Edwards, Director of Right-Away's Program, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, 225 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. 01772. Or send an email to Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N dot L dot Edwards, E-W-E-D-W-A-R-D-S at mass.gov. Okay? So let's just look at the science of what's going on. The EPA actually says there's no concerns to human health, unlikely to be a human carcinogen. But if you look at the science, there's a lot going on. With respect to plants, glyphosate itself, or herbicides itself, affects the protein generation within the plant. Okay? So the plant can't generate proteins to grow, and therefore dies. In animals and humans, that's not the case. What happens is the herbicides affect our biome, our gut intestines, where we produce our hormones, our nutrients, where we live from, from what's going on inside our guts. So no, herbicides don't affect us physically, one-to-one, but it affects our gut, and therefore affects our health, resulting in Alzheimer's, autism, celiac disease, diabetes, encephalitis, inflammatory bowel disease, obesity, on and on and on. Those are the repercussions of herbicides on human health. Okay? Another excellent reference, let me grab my book, is an MIT professor and research scientist who's written this book, Toxic Legacy. Okay? It's a fascinating read. Just alone in peer-reviewed articles, there's 321,000 peer-reviewed articles about herbicides in the environment. Just this year alone, there's 8,240 journal articles dealing with herbicides and the toxicity. Okay? Or if you like reading at night, before you go to sleep, read a book. Okay? So even the Boston school system bans the application of herbicides on school property. Does Harwich? When applying herbicides, PPEs, Personal Protective Equipment, is needed. That includes respirators, gloves, eye protection, face shields, body coverings, et cetera. Okay? It is toxic, so we can't get it on us. Right? It's a very regulated process, and applied by licensed professionals. So it's just not anybody else can do it themselves. But does licensing really ensure accuracy and correct application? I draw the parallel to driver's license. We all have driver's license, but yet accidents occur. Okay? When I'm walking the row, I've seen eastern box turtle, the endangered eastern box turtle. What about the deer, the turkeys, the songbirds, the insects, the butterflies, the bees, the moles, the mice, the salamanders, the newts, the amphibians, the soil microbial? What about them? What happens when herbicides are applied? Okay? Also, so far, 10 towns on Cape Cod have already written MDAR, requesting that Eversource's Vegetation Management Plan not be accepted as written. That includes Chatham, Orleans, Eastham, Dennis, Brewster, West Tisbury, Yarmouth, Falmouth, Barnstable, MP Town, and including the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates. Those, that, the Assembly of Delegates is a group of people that speaks directly to our legislature about our concerns. They have written as well, requesting that the Vegetation Management Plan not be accepted as written. When herbicides are sprayed on the ground, because our soil's so thin, it's hard to be metabolized by just our one or two inches of soil. So the herbicides leach down through our soil and reach the aquifer. Dan's here today, and he told me that next year, they're going to begin testing our water for herbicides, glyphosate and the metabolites. So good. All right? So Dan's concerned. That's great, because he's an excellent, excellent resource. Let's see, where am I at? There are less toxic options for vegetation management. Eversource only has right-of-way. They don't own the property. So why don't the property owners take care of their, their property? Right? If it's the Town of Harwich, great. If it's Harwich Conservation Trust, great. If it's a private landowner, great. Have them take care of it. Use less toxic pesticides and herbicides. Or have garden clubs, school groups, nonprofits take responsibility for vegetation management. There's a very good example on Bay Road, where a Food Forest Initiative garden was planted in an additional 300 feet, both north and south of the number eight well, or drinking water well supply, to eliminate spraying of herbicides. Okay? So I guess my point is Cape Cod is the place where we live. This is where we do live on a permeable sandbar, a single source of drinking water. What about your personal health and your family health? I need Eversource as much as you do. I personally have a one-to-one relationship with Eversource from working with them on the Food Forest Project. I need electricity just as much as you. But I don't need the risk of herbicides in our environment. Okay? So I'm asking, as the luck board, that you have the responsibility for the health and well-being of 13,000 residents. And even if there's just a hint of concern of the efficacy of herbicides, can we have, act in our best interest for those 13,000 residents not, not to continue with the Vegetation Management Plan as submitted to MDAR? So once again, please, I'm asking for your support that we can write to MDAR and ask that the plan not be accepted as written. I did a little bit of research, and I saw back in 2015, you actually wrote a letter to NSTAR on their yearly operational plan, delineating how herbicides should be applied along the row. So use that as example of your letter back to MDAR today about your concern about herbicides on the row. All right? So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer, or any other comments, I'm happy to help you.
Thank you, Patrick.
No, thank you very much as well.
So I neglected to mention at the beginning of this, with this topic and the next topic, there's a lot of people here to speak. If you agree with what is being asked, you could simply get up if you have no new points and say, I agree with the previous speaker. But if we allow everyone to talk for 15 minutes tonight, we'll all be here tomorrow morning. So you can agree, and I would ask you, if you disagree, to be respectful. Everybody will have a chance to talk, but we do have to set a limit on it tonight. So I would ask that we all try and keep our comments to three minutes or less, and you can simply agree or not agree. I'm going to call on Dan first. And Dan, if you would, just on the most recent email you sent the board related to the study that was done, if you could share with the public that, that information.
Yeah, just touching on that. Yeah, thank you. Dan Pelletier, Water Wastewater Superintendent. So just before I get into that, I just wanted to say, we have already started our, conducting our sampling for glyphosate. We took our first sample in November. We are in partnership with MDAR to do that. Their first sample did come back with no detection of glyphosate or its metabolite. So we are looking forward, and when as soon as those results become available, we'll be publishing those. One other study that Chairman McCaskill was asked into reference was one that MDAR had made me aware of. I believe it was done during 2018 to 2021, where they sampled four wells in Dennis, as well as one in Orleans, where they tested for glyphosate, its metabolite, as well as four or five other herbicide compounds, none of which were present in the results. So as for where we're at today, we haven't detected anything. If it's there, I want to know about it, and I'll be right on the picket line with you. But we haven't seen that yet.
Thank you, Dan. Any other Harwich residents wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Sophia Pilling. I live down the end of Headwaters. I drink my well water unfiltered. I've also been in the landscaping business for probably 15 to 17 years. I'm so nervous. I'm sorry. I don't talk in front of people.
You're doing great.
Thanks. I just want to disagree with the first comment. I think, who here has a pesticide license? It's not like getting a driver's license. It's tedious, it's long, there's a lot of information. People there are, you know, not there because they want to poison the world, but to learn how to, you know, manage certain problems that we have responsibly. You know, I think I'm, I'm certainly pro not using products when possible. But I think, you know, to some degree, we need to leave it to the experts to apply it properly and decide when it's, when it's appropriate. And also, I think there's a lot of science that shows that it's not as toxic. It doesn't move to the water. It binds to soil really easily. So I would say that just because there are a lot of studies, if you plug in the word glyphosate and toxicity, just because there are studies doesn't mean that they're, you know, negative. They're just looking into it, which we all should. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience from Harwich that wishes to comment? Anyone online? Okay, I'm going to go to board discussion. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Patrick. I will support the letter. I'd like to come at it from two different perspectives. One is the five-year plan that MDAR has put forth. This is similar to what they put forth before. I can't think of a more responsible plan that there use various ways to control the vegetation under the line. They're pruning, they're cutting things off, they're only using Roundup in limited ways, and very controlled methods. They've also said they aren't going to use it anywhere near water, so the wells are protected. And I think that when it came out before, one of my comments was, I, I wanted them to have someone watching the application, be sure they followed their plan. And I know this plan does that. So I think that's a very responsible plan. What they're striving for, which I applaud, is a sustaining vegetation under the lines that has a tiered system. So that, after, their hope is, they do this right, after with the pruning and so on, and the Roundup, what's necessary, that is sustaining, so they don't have to do it again. I will note, by the way, that even our Conservation Commission OKs Roundup with very careful scrutiny, but to get rid of poison ivy, for instance, where it's very difficult to get rid of. There's not many choices. There's not many choices to do something that kills the roots. And so as part of a very careful application, I, I think the five-year plan is good. My second comment, following the shy woman from Headwaters, there's not so much, is that Roundup has an interesting history. When it first came on, everyone loved it because it, it doesn't allow the plants that kills it to build or to manufacture the aromatic amino acids, and that kills the plants. It's non-toxic to us, because we don't make those aromatic amino acids, we have to get it from the plants. And so it's one of those non-toxic. And also, people liked it because the half-life in soils generally are between three, four weeks, maybe a little longer. And even though we have a sandy soil here, that's mainly by hydrologists and some microbial effects, the primary metabolite lasts a little longer, but it's very immobile in soil. It's now volatile. Dan, I appreciate your information on the Cape. There's been extensive surveys of water in the Midwest where it's used with no detections or very little, parts per trillion detection of glyphosate or its major metabolite. I'd like to remind you too, and I don't want to get into a lecture here, but what we're talking about is a risk assessment. Now, you know, what's a risk to us? And risk, from our aspect, is made up of two components, the so-called hazard, which is how toxic it is, and the second part of that is exposure. The hazard, or the toxicity, as we've seen, is very low. The exposure is basically nonexistent. Now, that doesn't mean we should not be careful with any herbicide, but I noticed in, nice discussion, Patrick, that you went back and forth of lumping Roundup and then herbicides in general. And with a chemical background, I hate it when, I like every chemical considered on its own merits, and not lumped together. It's a habit. And I did look back at some of the research that was by the author in the book, and I was, I was disappointed. Let me show you why. You can't see this, but I'll just point out, here are graphs you mentioned, like the effects on, I don't know, autism, anxiety, sleep disorder, and so on. And what this is, you probably can't see, but it's graphs of Roundup used during the years, and the, so when Roundup's grown, has increased during the years, the numbers of these disorders or effects has increased. Well, you all know, you can't, a correlation does not prove a cause. You know, I, I would argue, if you follow me around, you could correlate my Dairy Queen activity to how many back problems I have. Because I'm being Dairy Queen in the summer, and that's why I'm eating, and that's why I'm doing yard work. So having that is not, and that's a lot, and I looked at four or five, I didn't go because it's a whole litany of these. And I found one other study that a pig farmer in the UK had fed the pigs corn that had been treated, there was glyphosate, and, and then he stopped doing that. And they had so, so many miscarriages or, you know, bad birthing problems, and he stopped using the corn, and that decreased 3%. And then we added the corn that from glyphosate, and it increased 3%. Well, that's, there's no control in that. We have no idea the physical validity of that. And that cited as a, as a scientific reference to support the toxicity of Roundup. So again, I won't support, both because I like what I think MDR has taken a responsible approach. And I do think, I'm not disagreeing that we need to be careful of all herbicides. I don't use, I don't use many herbicides, but that's mainly because I'm cheap, by the way. And I also, Patrick, applaud the garden underneath, where I can work that out. But to make the unfounded statements of the very fear of Roundup, and then also then to tear down with your irresponsible approach, I can't support.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Never going to go to a lab with you.
Or Dairy Queen.
Or Dairy Queen. Patrick, I don't think you're going to get a vote from this board. I mean, what I might write myself is what I might write myself. And I certainly don't believe that the one-off application by licensed people in this room is a problem. I am, Larry, somewhat, I don't know, you live long enough, you start hearing things. I'm starting to get flashbacks of 50's commercials from Dow Chemical, Sunday morning shows saying without chemicals, life itself would not be possible. And that was the same period of time where my brother and sister and I would make a game of it to try to find, follow the DDT truck in New Jersey as closely as possible, because it was a cool endeavor. I don't know, you don't know what you don't know when you don't know it. I mean, there was a spike in autism generationally that nobody can explain, and looking at things one-off, I, I think is appealing to scientists, but I look at life as more complex than that, where things interact with each other. I'm just concerned, we're talking about it right away, it's a swath. It goes straight from the, the bridge all the way out to Provincetown. And if there are other alternatives, I mean, these guys don't produce electricity, they make all their money on lines. And, and they're doing pretty well, judging from my last bill. So if I were going to err, I would be erring on the, on the side of, you proved that your mass application of this stuff is, is fine. But again, that's different from somebody applying it to a house that's part of their, their, their business, because it's, it's mostly restrained to an acre, or an acre and a half, and you don't do the whole acre and a half either. There's a house on it. But this is, this is a whole different animal to me. It wouldn't show up in the well, because they don't do the right-aways over wells in a, in large measure. And I'm not thinking that it's leaching all over the Cape, but to think that no kid gets on a dirt bike and rides that, you know, right away, would be a little naive. And if I were, if I were going to default, I'd be defaulting on prove it to me that it's safe, not prove to me that it's dangerous.
Just one short comment. And if you, extremely.
Sure. Please.
Well, just, just from a general perspective, maybe a scientific perspective, you know, no one can prove the negative. Just a fact. We can improve positively, you can't, you can't, it's not, it's not a valid concept.
Thank you.
I'm having bad flashbacks to my science classes.
Mary?
First off, hats off to Larry, our science major here. Appreciate, certainly appreciate that. I was struck, and if any of you think we don't read everything that comes in, we read it all, and sometimes a bunch. I don't know Mr. Birch from Birch Landscaping, but his letter, I thought, was very compelling. He talked about something we haven't been allowed to use for phosphorus. We haven't been able to apply it for 10 to 12 years, and yet it is still found on the topsoil. So it is not getting through. It is not being found. I found that very compelling. And my next expert, I go right to Dan Pelletier, because nobody knows this stuff better than Dan, and obviously Larry, in my eyes. So I'm sorry, Patrick. I, I do also agree with, I think it was Tom's other comment, banning this is going to be a feel-good. We all want to do things to help the environment, and yes, that would feel good to ban something, but I don't think it's going to do anything, so I'm a no.
Julie?
So I appreciate the information shared, and obviously would be concerned if we found signs of glyphosate in our testings, but as Dan has pointed out, locally, we haven't found it, and the MDR three-year report hasn't found it. And I have a question for those of you experts in the audience. Isn't glyphosate the same thing we use for knotweed removal? Is that used in knotweed removal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Overwhelmingly, the crowd said yes for those at home. You can always speak from the microphone.
So, thank you for, that, that's what I thought, and that's being used and proved by the Conservation Commission, so, and that's again, to, to this woman and shy person in the back, that, you know, it takes expertise to be able to, to be distributing those materials to those soils. And those are, those are more detrimental in the, in the sense of their location than when we're talking about EverSource in the right-of-way. So I feel the same. I, I think Dan's right. If we started to see symptoms of this in our water, in our quality of soils, et cetera, then, then we have a problem. But until then, I don't see the proof either that it's there, so, thank you.
Thank you. I won't repeat what any of them said, but I will say that one comment that was made was about homeowners taking care of their own easements. And if you walk the power lines in Harwich, you'll see that most of our easements are taken care of by the homeowners and not EverSource spraying them. And certainly, when the licensed people show up, you have the right to discuss with them. And I know one homeowner that I spoke to, they pointed out what they wanted removed, and they removed it. And I feel a lot more comfortable having licensed professionals spraying the power lines than I do homeowners buying it at True Value Hardware Store legally and spraying it themselves. This has come up now, this is the fourth time we've been asked as a board that I've been on it to do this and to send the letter. And I have suggested in the past, this seems to be a fight that is beyond Cape Cod. And, and I don't see the point in going after EverSource when we're not looking at anyone else or even the sale of it. So maybe, maybe this belongs on the state level and not on the local level. We've heard now from each five board members, does any board member wish to make a positive motion to support sending the letter? Okay, so this topic is behind us. Next is the fertilizer, so.
I'll just say thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right?
Thank you for bringing it.
So, thank you.
So next up is to vote on the Board of Health's request on a fertilizer petition. So November 15th, the Board of Health had a meeting and voted to ask the Selectmen to petition the state to return authority of regulatory control use back to the town of Harwich. It really was back to individual towns, but we're only concerned with Harwich tonight. This did come up also from a resident initially, and we did as a board say that we were going to send it off to different departments, and the departments would take it up and come back to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation. The recommendation from the Board of Health was for the town to petition the state. Dan, I'm going to start with you on this, based on the memo that you sent us. And if that memo didn't make it into the packet tonight, it will be in correspondence next week, and anyone can request a copy of it from the front office. Dan, if you would, do you have that with you?
Is that the email?
That is the email.
I have it, Dan.
If you want it, we have it. I printed it, Mary printed it. And this is related to.
You'll have it memorized?
I was going to try to go off. This is related to bringing the fertilizer back. And this is a request for the board to petition the state to bring it back. The Water, Waste Water Superintendent has given us some, his thoughts on why we shouldn't bring it back, is the way that I'm reading his letter. So I'm going to start with you on this one, Dan.
Yeah, well, I guess if I can just, from, from the water quality standpoint, which is the deepest in my, you know, to me, is I have concerns with the alternative. You know, we bring back the regulation of fertilizer, we ban the use of pelletized nitrogen fertilizer, and we seek organic natural alternative as well. The predominant natural alternative is malorganite, which is made with wastewater treatment plant residuals, and has been known now to find, contain PFAS in it. The state of Maine is dealing with a big issue where they've been taking wastewater treatment plant residuals and applying it to fields, and now they're all contaminated with PFAS. So I wouldn't want to trade nitrogen for PFAS. Beyond that, there's not clear direction from the state yet with respect to the wastewater management plan as to how they would credit a reduction or ban a fertilizer in town. They've offered to us a 200-kilogram credit. However, that credit ultimately needs to be validated through water quality sampling out at the Sentinel Stations in Pleasant Bay and the other impaired estuaries in town. So without a, what I would argue is a financial benefit, concerned with the alternatives, I think that leaves us open to, you know, I guess a worse situation if we do go down that road.
Thank you, Dan. I'll get back to questions from the board at the end, unless anyone has something pressing they have to ask him now. I'm going to call on Tom Birch, who took the time to write the letter to the board and the Board of Health.
Thanks for having me. Tried to speak at the last meeting, but I wasn't allowed, so we're going to move forward, and I gave everyone a copy of the letter. Thanks for reading it. Forty-two-year resident of the town of Harwich, been in the landscape trade just about that whole time. I try to be as simple as possible, but in all my knowledge and all my learning, this isn't what's causing the problem. The fertilizer is not leaching through the topsoil into the groundwater. I believe, and the state, I think, backed me up a couple of weeks ago between meetings, saying that the septic systems in Title V are the huge issue here. I, I think they presented it to you and created our timeline for those to be decreased. So I put a little thing in there about just an example of phosphorus, which is all the phosphorus leaches through the topsoil into the groundwater. Well, I do quite a many soil tests on my properties, phosphorus is off the chart on probably 95% of them. The key thing is, we haven't applied commercial phosphorus to lawns in 10 years through the state. The Val Patrick banned it, except for special circumstances like new lawns. And yet, we claim it leaches. Well, it hasn't been applied in 12 years, but it's still bonded in the soil. It isn't leaching. It doesn't go through the soil. In 12 years, I think if it was leaching, it would be all gone, or it would spiral down and get less and less every year. It's all, it's right up at the top. I'd like to see the board, instead of proposing to turn this over to the state, why don't we try to take a proactive thing and do some education? Maybe get a grant for soil tests for people in critical areas? Educate the people. Teach them how to do it. I'd be more than happy to work with, with a committee in the town to do that. But, and all out ban, or to tell, to micromanage this town managed, that town managed, Harwich managed, we can't do that. We don't even know what we're, we need the state to do what they're doing, and they're doing a darn good job, and I think we should leave it at the state. I could speak for three hours on this topic, but I'll keep it to three minutes. So ask any questions, answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom right now, or you want to say it until the end? Thank you, Tom. Who else would like to speak on this?
Good evening. John Senate, local resident, White Road, Harwich Port, pesticide license holder for the past 40 years. I think if you have a problem with this, first of all, you shouldn't mess with the state. The state's been doing a good job with this. They've been doing it for a long time. We can't get involved in this. It'll cost too much money, too many people, too much everything. The expense alone that they go through is relicensing, recertification, testing, classes, CEUs. It's not something that you, that the town should even be involved in, or any town. It's already done, it's been being done. I got my license 1982, had it since. I don't practice with it every day, but I still have it. It's one of those things. It's not, it's not up to us to do that. It really isn't. There's no possible way that we could police that or do anything else with it. It's just not going to happen. Can't. They do a good job. Leave it with them. If anything else suggests that they, everybody get a license, then you'll know. Train, learn. That's the biggest problem. People use it if they don't know what they're doing, that's a different thing. Basic, it's very simple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen in the back?
Good evening. Lindsay Strode, Cape Organics. Like most of these seasoned veterans out here, we've been around a while. I think it's incumbent upon the board to look at what exists presently with regards to regulation. You have conservation that has a 50-foot no disturbs zone, a 100-foot no disturbs, no disturb zone. You have 120-foot buffer zone for AC/EC. You also have a 200-foot riparian buffer zone. And those encompass probably 90% or more of all the sensitive areas within the town of Harwich, or Orleans, or Dennis. Any town that has blanket application prohibitions shouldn't necessarily be allowed to do that over the whole town, because that's not where the issue is. The issue is in the resource areas. I was on Harwich Conservation Commission for over 10 years, instrumental in assisting in the original wetland bylaw, and there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of education that went on to the public. And like Tom, like John, I think it's incumbent upon the town, and it's heavier lifting, I get it, to do, to teach best management practices. I've been with the Extension Service for over 28 years. I've been with the Extension Service for over 28 years, and I can't tell you how many times the general public will call up and ask, "Well, little's good. Should I put down more?" And I'm like, "No, you don't, the plant doesn't need more." The idea that a little's good and a lot's better doesn't work in that situation. And as a contractor, I am not going to put down any more than I need to, to get the required results. I have offered my expertise, and again, Tom, and I will say, I will, what do they say? Volantel, other, you know, ancillary professionals, they would be happy to sit down with various boards, Water Department, wastewater, conservation, and promulgate regulations that are in the best interest of everybody. I've offered that. I haven't heard back from anybody, from any town. So I think it's important to understand that our, our best resource is the people. You know, we don't have a fertilizer problem. We have a people problem, and we have a number of individuals within the industry that are willing to share this, both, both for their own, their own business, but also to the betterment of the resource that everybody holds in common for the town of Harwich.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, Patrick.
I guess I could risk a comment here, not being a professional. But again, you know, I live on Cape Cod, and the environment's in decline. The embayments are full of nitrogen. Our fresh ponds are full of phosphorus. Where's it coming from? Okay. If our septic system is attributed to 80% of that pollution, we're addressing that at a tune of, what is it, $40 billion to sewer the Cape Cod? Is it 40 billion or 20 billion? I don't remember, but something billion.
No going up.
Billion here.
All right, sorry. So we're spending an enormous amount of money on searing, which I agree with. Yes, it needs to be done. Doesn't resolve what, what the issue of, what do you do with the wastewater that's finally treated, and what do you do with the sludge? We still have that problem. You're not resolving the problem. Mike, I guess my point here today is fertilizer, if we stop using it, is free. It doesn't cost the town anything. It doesn't cost, you, you save money by not using fertilizer. And fertilizer does contribute, it's been said, 15% of the phosphorus and nitrogen in our environment. So at a very simple, easy motion of not applying fertilizer, we can reduce the load in our environment very quickly and easily with no cost. So I support the initiative to have home rule. Let Harwich decide how we deal with our neighborhoods, with our soil types here on Cape Cod. All right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else? I'm not starting with Larry this time.
Appreciate that.
The Board of Health sent something.
We're telling you the moment of silence, by the way.
It's for sale.
Katie, do you wish to add anything? Okay, thank you. Julie, you spoke the least the last time.
So, I, I, I kind of go back and forth between leaving it with the state or going back to saying, you know, I certainly think education's very important. I think all of you brought up really good points. I guess one question I would have, based on the comment by Lindsay in terms of the sensitive areas are really the more contributing factors here, you know, is this, is this, and I'm asking the question, you know, the areas that are sensitive, that are going through any kind of development, are going through conservation, through notice of intent, and an order of conditions? So is this something that should be possibly added as a standard to an order of conditions for, to require, you know, soil testing? I mean, you have mitigation plantings and things like that that have to be monitored, reports have to be submitted. So maybe the soil testing in these sensitive areas would at least help some, some of our problem. But then it goes back to the others, like myself, who don't, I'm nowhere near the water, and I don't have any wetlands around me. So I agree. I think the general population needs education on it. So I guess, you know, I'm looking at different venues in the sense that we've got some sensitive areas, a lot of sensitive areas. We could maybe address that through incorporating it into the order of conditions that are issued for projects. And then maybe there's a mass education campaign locally. But again, I know I'm not addressing whether or not we go state, or, you know, and ask the state to give it back to us, or do we stay with the state? I do think that it should be left to experts to, to put on lawns and such. I mean, I know myself, I wouldn't know the right amounts. I'd be using too much. So I think that's a big problem we have on the other areas, so...
Julie, we would probably have that conversation with the Conservation Commission rather than get an answer from the general public.
Right, no, right. I'm just saying, is it, is it a question that, you know, I'm glad to see the nodding of heads because I think it could be helpful, but if not, then it's still a discussion with conservation.
Just for the general public, the nodding of heads is in the yes. Consensus is yes.
So Katie O'Neil, Health Director, just to respond to Julie's comment, that's a great idea, but with the current regulations, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Right. They would have to be, right, changed.
That's, that's, that's the issue that the Board wanted to petition the state to be able to do. The Board of Health had no intention of banning fertilizer, but that, the Conservation Commission wouldn't be able to either under the same regulation.
Right. So we would have to make revisions and requests?
We couldn't. You'd have to petition the state to return it.
Yeah, because the, because DEP's overseeing
Correct.
The order of conditions.
It's agriculture. It's not DEP.
Correct. It's MDR. It's not DEP. They wouldn't be able to.
But I get that, but I mean, it, it would be the regulations under the Department of Environmental Protection that oversee the order of conditions.
So it's my understanding that we couldn't add that on now, that it would still fall under MDR. You could certainly request legal, but the last time we had checked, legal had told us they wouldn't be able to do that. That's something we can certainly follow up on.
Okay. But couldn't we change our local bylaw?
Not without home rule. That, that was, that's kind of, we can't do anything around fertilizer.
I do kind of remember that now that you say that, yeah.
Can you repeat what change you're looking for now?
I'm sorry?
Jurisdictional.
What change you're looking for in terms of regulating the herb, the...
Just jurisdiction.
To do, to do what?
So, so for, for using Julie's example, we wouldn't be able to do that because we don't have jurisdiction over it.
We'd have to gain jurisdiction on the local level rather than the state having control over the license.
If we wanted to change the application rate or whatever.
Right. So that's what I'm saying is, you know, if we can go locally and incorporate that, then we would, then we would be able to say, per Harwich, you know, conservation bylaw, blah, 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 you're also required to incorporate this into your order of conditions. But to your point...
If the state returned it, yes.
Right, exactly. So if the state returns it back to us. So there's certainly a process, a large process. But I think it could still address sensitive areas. But to your point, it's a conversation to be had, first with conservation and then further.
Mary?
Still not a scientist, but I think there's a lot more scientists on the state level than there are in the town of Harwich. And I certainly don't want to be making these type of judgments with very little, very little of that info in my brain, so I am not in favor of this.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reinforce what was just said. I may be a government geek because I'm not going in the science direction, but I, there was a point in time when, rather than talking about all the experts being in the state, we'd be talking about, well, how come they don't trust us to be able to make our own judgments at the local level? It's peculiarly placed in, as an agricultural jurisdiction in the state. It's, DEP doesn't have anything really to do about it. While I, trust me, I've known Tom, John, and Lindsay for years and years. Trust them. As a matter of fact, it was heartening to see, you know, people who've been doing this for years come in here and start talking about that. We did have a program out of the Board of Health back in the early 2000s, and it was extremely helpful with long pond and sand pond, and it changed people's attitudes and the way they worked on things. It's, it's somebody who goes out and buys 17 bags of fertilizer at Ace Hardware is the person I'm concerned about. But, you know, call me a stickler, but relatively intelligent, and we can walk and chew gum at the same time, even though we live in poor little Harwich as opposed to up in Beacon Hill. And there's two arguments going on here. I don't want to see anybody ban everybody's way of life, but there needs to be some education. We can't get involved with anything in this area because there was a sunshine or sunset for the regulatory regime. Anywhere on Cape Cod, we have to ask for permission through the state to get any change of anything. Can't be a discussion here. You can't incorporate any local bylaws. We're prohibited from doing it. I, I think that it really is important to ask them to allow us to have our own jurisdiction so we can have discussions. Not to ban it, but so we can be telling our own residents. I don't believe that they're listening to the state anyway. They'd be far more likely to listen to the literature coming out of their own town hall than they would go seeking out some department in Boston. But we did have real problems. There were problems in ponds that we addressed, and it was mostly through public education, by the way. It just burns me that at a time when we wanted to have a discussion, we're basically told you can't have a discussion. You can't discuss anything because it's our jurisdiction and you have no right to say anything. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
Mary?
Thank you. I'll be shorter this time. I think, I like a couple of comments. I like, one is, is the educational aspect. We did have, boy, I keep going back in history, maybe 10 years ago now, we did have, I think, a very successful program, at least once or twice, of educating the landscapers and then homeowners. That was actually well-attended. We encouraged, Conservation at the time encouraged everyone who had, that they worked with to show up and go through the training. And I think a lot of people paid attention to that. And we need to do that again, to educate. So Lindsay and the others, I, I think we need to look at it. I think the, I think the regulations are, will work. Our issue is, is that we don't know quite how to enforce the regulations. That was the, you know, Conservation Commission right now can put contingency on what's happening and they're no, no bill zone, and they can prevent application of herbicides there. They can't?
So...
Fertilizer we're talking about.
Fertilizer we're talking about. Fertilizer.
Julie, go ahead.
So, and just to clarify, the DEP comment that I made was in regard to the order of conditions, understanding that MDR deals with the fertilizer part, but what Katie's saying is, right now, we need to solve for A before we can add the B.
And I think, thank you, and the, as I understand the state regulations, they, if we follow those as we should, you can only apply a certain amount of fertilizer, and it has to be done during the growing season because there's, there's not a lot of leaching during the growing season because plants are taking up the nitrogen. Last time I was there with fertilizer at AgWaters, I don't remember fertilizers having phosphorus in them anymore.
No.
And so I don't know if fertilizers, you know, stopping that would have an effect on going forward. We have phosphorus in the back, it's going slow, so. I think the tools are there for us to protect our water. I think we need to figure out education and how to enforce them.
Can we put that on our future agenda then, about having workshops like that?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make the note, but obviously a request from you would go along with it.
So just assuming this all goes through, we, you send a letter, they give us the responsibility, we come up with standards, how do you enforce this? See, that would be my other question, is which department are you going to tape another arm on to be the fertilizer police? Mr. Powers would probably be able to come up with what it would cost for a person and a half for the course of a year, what it would cost between benefits, all of that. I'm not, I'm not trying to be Chicken Little, but there's the reality is, who gets to be the enforcement arm, and what does that look like? What does it cost compared to what does some good best management practices through the Extension Service, through local landscapers, in building relationships? What are we here for in the big picture? You don't have to answer that, but we're here to build relationships, right? And you, you earn the privilege of speaking into somebody's life when you have a relationship. So that's my bigger philosophical bet. But I think it's important to try the public education first, work that out, and see what, and have some definitive empirical standards that we can look at and say, okay, well, a certain amount of material has been taken out of areas that are sensitive. Granted, we can't necessarily now make it a part of the order of conditions, but the commission can request a fertility management plan, ongoing testing, and again, I've been on that side of the desk. If people want to do something, it's horse trading. We'll go back and forth, and I've developed fertility management plans within resource areas and have ongoing testing. And with an, with an order of conditions, you can have an order of conditions that has ongoing conditions for imperperity. So I think it's important to start that way in general.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to interject. I try to think, play devil's advocate on all these discussions sometimes to my own dismay. But with this, you know, while there's no one's intention here, as I understand it, to burn the, ban the application of fertilizer, returning jurisdiction to us certainly opens the door for a citizen's petition. And in the world that we live in today where everyone loves to ban things and cancel things, you know, I, I have grave concerns that, as I mentioned, the malorganite, the organic alternative has PFAS. And if we find ourselves with a citizen's petition to ban this and allowing organic alternatives, you know, we're trading nitrogen for a forever chemical. So, that's that.
Lindsay took the words right out of my mouth. Enforcement is huge. We can make any rules we want. If there's nobody to enforce it, we're not going to enforce it. And Mr. Senate talked about the state having all the resources for the, for the education and to make these rules, and that's where, in my opinion, it belongs. It doesn't belong on a local level with five elected officials that get elected in and elected out, and a Board of Health that we may end up with, Board of Health members that don't know anything about fertilizer and don't care to know anything about fertilizer, yet then would make a decision to ban it. The state has the tools, and that's where this belongs. Education is what we chose in our CWMP. We've done very little of it. We've heard tonight from the licensed people in the room that they'd be willing to help, and it should be a topic that the Board takes up soon, on increasing our education, not taking back control of something that we really shouldn't be controlling. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out that as opposed to the other two sequences that we went through in the early 2000s and then in the teens, or early teens, we now have a robust internet. Channel 19 is not on cable. Channel 18 is not on cable. We go on YouTube. If they made an educational video, it would even get more play than anything we ever did in the past, and it's a ready resource. I just think, like I said, I hate ceding any kind of authority because when it gets into a governmental power struggle, you sometimes forget what it is you're arguing about. I'd really like to educate people because these guys out here aren't really interested in dumping as much fertilizer as they possibly can get their hands on on properties. They're going to go bankrupt that way. They're looking for as little as they can do in order to get as much as they can out of the result. It's the people that are doing it themselves that I'm more worried about because they don't really know what they're doing.
That's why I pay somebody. Does anyone on the Board wish to make a positive motion on the request? Hearing none? This is beyond us. Thank you. Don, I'll put the last few...
See where I'm going with this.
Yep.
Don, say, I'll try to...
Take care, John.
Joe, I'm just going to give everyone a minute to leave.
No objection.
Don't be such a stranger. You can visit us any week.
D. Update annual town meeting article related to owners unknown. I believe Article 39. Joe?
I'm just going to chub that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is a working group that I've assembled that relates back to Article 39 at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. You may recall, Town Meeting appropriated half a million dollars for the purposes of getting a handle on owners unknown, undesignated parcels, and the like. I had a meeting on December 9th with the interim assessing director, the assistant town administrator, and the finance director, and we went over really a description of all of those items. And the interim assessing director is working on an overall plan of attack.
Thank you. Joe, who would be the working group going forward? And will there be a working group going forward? And is it just the names that you mentioned?
Well, my recommendation at present is to work through staff to identify probably resources that we can avail ourselves of through council. That would be, you know, title research. We do hope to have an engineer and soon after a surveyor on staff. So I think a lot of this can be done at the staff level. I can certainly broaden the discussions at some point in time when appropriate to bring in, or on the contrary, not bring in, but go in front of real estate and open space and other groups as well.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Julie?
No, I don't have any. I mean, I think that sounds like a good plan of attack. I guess the only question I have, though, is the engineer and surveyor, any kind of ETA on?
I should know hopefully sometime this week if my magic worked.
Okay.
More on that later.
Thanks.
Mary?
No, just, we made some progress with the sale of some of those parcels, correct?
Right, on the tax-taking, on the land of low value auctions. We certainly got more return than I think staff initially expected. So that's one way to do it. I know that since this topic was brought up through the assessing department, they have made strides on the owners unknown. I think now the word is out on the street that the town is taking this seriously. We have more people paying attention to those owners unknown and coming in.
Okay. Don?
I'll cede my time to Richard Wastek.
Larry?
None.
Mr. Wastek.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Richard Wastek, the Board of Assessors. I don't know if all of the members of the board had gotten the memo that was written or if it was just to you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not sure. I commented back on that memo to Joe today, and I think there'll be more to follow.
Okay.
That was from Gail, not from the Board of Assessors, correct?
Correct. Correct. Obviously, she keeps the board informed of what is happening, the department, and the memo will give a lot of information to the board about the ongoing. One of the things I want to say is that the board itself has made a modification on one of their policies. That had required for many, many years, this goes back 10-plus years ago, where the board had required not only a deed but an engineered stamped plan to correspond to a deed before a property could be assigned a map and parcel number. We have backed off on that as a result of discussions with DOR in looking at assigning some of these parcels to the heirs of. And that's pretty well stelled out in that memo from the interim assessor. Bottom line is, they can do the work. You know, we've got a woman who's very capable as our interim assessor, and I think once we get to full staffing in the department, they can pick up the momentum that started so great, but again, brought in $9,000 in additional taxes this year. With full staff, the interim assessor can be doing a lot more of that work. So.
And what was the total added back to the tax rolls, not just what we collected?
That is correct. It was over $1 million in, says 1.108,900 of value that was added to the community.
And that was just doing mapping and digitizing the mapping and assigning parcel numbers, correct, not related to owners unknown?
There were a couple. And what's happening is, Mr. Powers, so well put, is many people are coming out of the woodwork. They know that this is happening. They know changes are afoot. And frankly, Mr. Chairman, I will give you a lot of credit for that because you've been working on this for a number of years. You've brought it to the forefront. We've got the money now funded through Town Meeting to look at it, and we've got some good people in place. And the interim assessor is a very, very bright assessor, and she can do a lot of this once we get back to full staffing. There's a lot more that can be done, and it will be greatly beneficial. There are a lot more maybe miscellaneous parcels that were due to subdivisions of larger parcels, so we may have actually more than we originally thought. But once they get that work done, and now that they have digitized the majority of the town, it's like a big, huge jigsaw puzzle. They're doing a great job of trying to put those pieces in place now.
Okay. And thank you, Richard, and I appreciate the conversation on the cryptic note from Gail that will become public. Some of that relates to an ask for additional staff. So it's not just related to what we have, but some of it was a request from an interim department head for additional staff, if I read it correctly.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, the board deals with regulation and policy. We have nothing to do with the operation of the department that is under the auspices of your town administrator. We're looking at just at regular full staffing. We're not talking about additional. That's, again, it's outside of the purview of the Board of Assessors.
So Joe can tell the board that every week I meet with them and every week I say, where are we with Article 39? And as much as I appreciate as much work as we've done, Town Meeting authorized us to spend up to $500,000 on owners unknown and unidentified properties. To the earlier question about when are we going to have an engineer and when are we going to have a surveyor, engineer looks like it'll be sooner than a surveyor. And we certainly have the tools now to go out to bid for a surveyor. A lot of what needs to be done on owners unknown is we have to put boots on the ground and find properties. And some of these properties are fairly large. Real Estate and Open Space gave us a list of properties. And I guess my ask is, and Joe is aware of it and just gave us an update, it's time to do procurement and hire some people to identify some of these properties and where they are, and then with the help of the assessing department, finalize it. But we're still going to have to do surveying. We're still going to have to do engineering, and we still have a list from Real Estate and Open Space that we need to start on. And I do believe, Joe, we've discussed this $500,000 will only go so far. We're probably going to put in follow-up articles for more funding to get this done, and this is a multi-year problem. It took multi-years to get there, and it's going to take multi-years to fix it. Don? Joe set?
Yep.
Larry?
I'm all set.
Joe, anything to add?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Can I get a motion on F?
Mr. Chair, I move to vote to approve.
E, sorry.
Okay. I was going with what you told me.
And they put bigger font this week.
Yeah, it's true. But, so I will still say, I make a motion to vote to approve or appoint the town administrator as the voting delegate for the MIA Annual Members Business Meeting that's being held on 121, 2023.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Probably should.
Aye.
Probably shouldn't have used an acronym.
F. Motion on F.
I move to approve a 2023 Class II and Class IV Auto Repair and Use Auto Dealer License for Richard Centrella, DBA Richard's Garage, 191 Queen Anne Road.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the 2023 Inholders License Renewal for Moon Custer's Tavern at 86 Sisson Road.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero?
I only get to do this every once in a while when I'm the clerk. I vote, I move that we vote to approve the 2023 Common Vittler's License Renewal.
Four.
But yeah, I just want that to sink in. For Zack Incorporated, DBA Castaways, 986 Route 28.
And?
Ashwood Food Service Incorporated, DBA Jake Rooney's at 119 Brooks Road.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero?
I watched my Westerns. They were Vittles. They weren't Victles. I moved, Mr. Chair, that we approve Villa Roma's request to temporarily close their Mass General Chapter 138, Section 12 Licensed Establishment until April of 2023. With some regret, I might add, because this is a common thread. Nobody can get any help, and they're all like dragging.
Who's second in that?
I did.
Okay. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve Quocetin's request to temporarily close their MGL Chapter 138, Section 12 Licensed Establishment until February 9th, 2023.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As I normally do with these, if there's any previous restrictions that we've imposed, like the Times, I'm reading that into the motion, but I move that we vote to approve the 2023 weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal as requested from Ashwood Service Incorporated, doing business as Jake Rooney's, 119 Brooks Road. Let's see here. And it is for the Times that are on the application. Weekdays, 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside only with live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers, and trivia. And Sunday, in separate application, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. inside, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers, and trivia. Let's see here. As it's noted, that's part.
So do I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, I will note that they're similar, and we've gone down this road before, and I want to say it publicly, because Mary came into the middle of this originally. There's differences in areas. Not only is this just inside, Jake Rooney's is not ground zero of anything. So we've never gotten any complaints. It's a responsible location. I don't see that there's any problems with granting what they're asking.
Okay. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero?
Hmm.
You want to go ahead on the next one?
I don't want to steal their thunder. Do they want to make the motion?
Well, I'll go ahead.
Larry?
Either Julie and I, this is nominations, but both approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. Harry Mumm's Pining Board, alternate member, term to expire June 30, 2024. Michelle Ryan, Golf Committee, full member, term to expire June 30, 2025. John August, Board of Appeals, alternate member, term to expire June 30, 2025.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero? And a motion on M.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the town administrator as the Harwich representative of the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority as the CCRTA.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, this has always been a vexing problem, and now it's going on for six years for me. Is there any way of getting a matrix of some sort for the appointments that require staff to be appointed here or there to the county? And what, because everybody's got their own thing going on, for how long the terms are, how often.
The answer to your question is yes.
Because it would be nice to have that compendium.
Do I put that in my notes for the next meeting? Okay, moved. Was that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero? Joe, will you open N?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll see in the packet, I have presented to you and with copies to Chief Gilmett of the Harwich Police Department, Attorney Jeffrey Blake from KP Law, and attorney Carolyn Conway for the licensee, my recommended action following disciplinary hearing held on October 17, 2022 regarding alleged entertainment license and liquor license violations by Port Restaurant and Bar Incorporated located at 541 Route 28 in Harwich Port. My memorandum dated December 14 outlines the allegations of violations, the summaries of what was presented, the information on exhibits and witnesses. However, my conclusion after the conduct of that hearing is that there is insufficient evidence or insufficient testimony that was provided that would uphold the allegations as presented. Therefore, my recommendation to you as hearing officer, to you folks as local licensing authority, is vote to accept the findings and consider the matter closed.
Thank you, Joe. Questions and comments, Larry?
Don, thanks for holding a hearing, Joe.
Don?
Yeah, I don't want to seem like piling on, but it's not like, I was just curious, were there a number of people invited to this? So one thing that I was concerned about in the past is that the witnesses were somewhat limited, which somewhat skewed the outcome.
No, I think it's fair to say that there were ample witnesses provided by the town and witnesses provided by the establishment. They were all sworn to testimony, testified, examined, and cross-examined. So in this instance, I think there was everyone there pretty much that we needed there.
I say that not disparaging the outcome of your hearing, but I'm somewhat concerned. We have a gentleman here who's the chief of the police department, and we've been pressing him for, I think it would be accurate to say years, to do a lot more enforcement. And in some way, I need a message to get out through the department that we're appreciative, that they're trying their best to apply the rules that we give them because they're not their rules, they're our rules. And it's got to be frustrating where they try to write up stuff, and then it comes here and nothing seems to happen. But that's why I mentioned, when I start seeing the same name more than once, there's a complaint. It just worries me because I want to make sure we had a good summer. I've talked to an awful lot of people. They said they can't believe how much better things were. So thanks to the force. But I don't know how long that goes if there isn't anything that happens to somebody.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I share Don's concern. I think the police have done an excellent job, and it is the same establishments that have the issues, but I also trust Joe's expertise in these hearings, so I'm good with that.
Julie?
I don't have anything to add. I agree with both of you.
I'll just say I trust the process that we created, and the hearings happened, there was testimony, and finding of facts is what the finding of facts is.
But I particularly want to make sure that our gratitude gets sent back through the chief to the department. I don't want them to lose faith in anything.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, thanks, Selectman Howell. There was still value in the process. I want to, and I will pass on your thanks and support from the entire board. And I agree, it was a much better summer. And so I think regardless of some of the findings, I think that the process is working because it is a wake-up call still to be summoned before the board. There were some close calls on these, these three particular instances, that, you know, the attorney did a good job, the opposing attorney did a good job. I still need to refine my information that I give to my troops for, you know, things like restrictions on licenses and things of that nature. But we are moving in the right direction, and I believe there's still value in it. And I'm, you know, I'm not surprised by the findings. I attended the hearing, and I knew it was going to be close calls on all three. So.
Thank you, Chief. Don?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we vote.
Hang on. Go ahead. I can do this.
We vote to approve, as the board's selectmen, as a licensing authority, to accept the findings from the town administrator and consider the matter closed.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience? Anyone online? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero? Full business. Update on Judah Eldridge and Willow Street. Joe?
With those matters, Mr. Chairman, first with Judah Eldridge. We are still waiting for the findings from the tax title based on the new survey. A request for an update was sent last week to the attorney, and once we have that, I can share it with the board. The issue with Willow Street remains one relative to despite the boundary action taken by the board, there is concern as to the validity, excuse me, as to the accuracy of the deed on that property, so we're working with counsel.
Joe, on both of those, Willow Street's been going on not as long as the West Howard School, but quite some time.
Some odd years.
Can we let the attorneys know this is utmost important of the board, and I'll speak for the board, and they can disagree if they want, that we resolve this one by town meeting? We had a CPC. We had a CPC appropriation for this three years ago, or four years ago, I believe, maybe longer. But it's time to put this one to bed. We are done with the survey, but legal needs to know that this is of the utmost importance.
And that's for both, Mr. Chairman?
Well, as far as Willow Street goes, nobody's shown me yet what the discrepancies are. And we did resolve the bounds, and there was surveying done for the bounds. So if the title's bad, can we get something from the lawyers that say the title's bad? If the title's not bad, can we agenda this so the board can decide what they want to do with that property? Don?
Yeah, I want to add to what the chair said. He's absolutely right. This has been going on more than 20 years, as far as I know. It's a hot-button issue under the surface because I know Hesh wanted to build a couple of affordable housing units there. They wanted the town to donate it. Every time it comes up, it comes up as, yeah, we kind of own it, but nah, we don't own it. I mean, it's got to get resolved. It can't be like... They're almost using this as a strategy. The boundaries that you thought you knew are different than the ones we think we have. I mean, somewhere or another, there's got to be a conclusion. This is a real estate issue. How hard can it be?
Thank you, Don. Any further comments? Thank you. B Capital Plan Fiscal Year 2023 versus Capital Plan Fiscal 2024. Selectman Howell brought this up at our last meeting, the joint meeting, and the changes, and the changes needing a two-thirds vote. Joe, you outline the changes in the two plans?
Certainly, and you should have in front of you first a document that, in the footer, references Appendix C-1, and in the header says five-year capital outlay plan fiscal year 2023 to 2027. Although it's on 11 by 17, this is the plan that was in the warrant at the 2022 annual town meeting, and it was adopted by the town. And then the second document in the header says five-year capital outlay plan fiscal year 2024 to 2028. And again, in the footer, you can see where it indicates that it was presented November 21st, 2022, and that's a reference to when that was presented to the capital outlay plan. Just at the very top, I will tell you, the major amendment, to call it that, is if you look in the plan for '23, you can see there is one line for facility maintenance. And if you look at the plan for '24, you can see there are several lines for facilities maintenance. This was a conscious act and decision by me to try to gain transparency and clarity to demonstrate first to capital outlay, then to the board and finance committee, and eventually on to town meeting money that is being requested for buildings. I've been saying for a few years now that it's... I don't think it's appropriate to ask a subject matter expert in a programming area to have to explain the need for dual cam overhead air handling system or the like. That sounded made up, but it's actually real. And so trying to draw those out in the plan in fiscal year '24. And then obvious beyond that is the major difference is the dollar amount from $44.6 million to $75.4 million. Otherwise, I can tell you that I can do an inventory to outline specifically several changes beyond that, but for the most part, those are the major ones.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the week I told you I had, I didn't have to put these up on a screen and look at them. I'm just concerned because in each... It's not the money because the money can... If the project is there and it's at $22 million, and it goes to $22.4 million, that's presumed, it's baked into cake, that as the plan goes through its five-year cycle, that's going to start happening. That there are differences, I just want to point out, it's a five-year plan, and each... We're going to have to go through two-thirds votes for each and every individual addition. And I haven't had a chance to do a crosswalk to look at it. But anything that just kind of slid into another year, it doesn't matter whether it's this upcoming year, it matters that it's on the plan at all. And every time you add something to year two, year five, year three, doesn't matter what year you're adding it to, in order to do that, in order to... Even if you're dropping it from year one to year two, you have to make a two-thirds vote to have the town acquiesce to it. That happened with the Brooks Library, if anybody on the board recalls that. It had to go through a couple of changes, and it was in year one, and it got pushed back a couple of times for the renovation of the library. It's not anything particular that I'm up against, that I'm against. It's just that the plan, this is the first year back with trying to establish some law and order in the Wild West here because we went for a number of years with a capital budget, I guess you'd call it, because it wasn't fixed. Every year, it got changed. And it's not just a plan for us to create a plan for ourselves over a five-year period. It's a plan for the public to be able to plan for what their taxes are going to look like as we move forward and create some certainty to them that this is what's going to happen over the next five years. So, which is why, I mean, I argued that the two-thirds wasn't onerous because in my experience over like 32 years, I've never seen a town meeting turn down a legitimate request to resequence something or to add something in because things happen. But since we're going back to, you know, year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five, that's why I asked the question last week. It's like, okay, I'm presuming then you're saying to me that everything years two through five, which are now years one through four because we're in a new fiscal year, is identical? And it's not. So I just try to put us all on alert that we're looking at two-thirds votes for a bunch of things.
Joe, follow-up?
At this point, it would be more personal and philosophical than responsive, so I'd rather hear more comments from the board before I speak.
Julie?
I don't have any comments.
Mary?
No, I mean, we've been through these item by item, so I'm pretty comfortable with the list.
Larry?
I just need to study it more because I'm still trying to understand the process and how we separate these out without having a 10-hour discussion at town meeting. For instance, if we have facility management button, line item before one item, we separate those out, do we have to discuss every item within that facility maintenance budget because we separated them out rather than the total? I think I need some clarification to... I quite frankly don't understand it as much as I should.
Now, Joe. My concern is exactly what Larry said. 10 hours of conversation about changes on a capital plan that are title changes, not giant amount changes. How many are we looking at based on what was voted for the capital plan versus what we have today? And is it worth revisiting an article for town meeting that clarifies this further? Because quite frankly, I think it's a disaster waiting to happen. And Don, I agree with you about the transparency and the planning.
What you're saying is actually my major concern. I don't want to do a sleepover.
And based on what you said and based on these changes, we're going to do a sleepover. Joe?
Well, first one item, I think I have to emphasize greatly. The FY 2024 to 2028 is a draft. It was voted by the capital outlay plan throughout close to six months of evaluation, presented jointly as required by the charter, and it sits waiting for comment from both the board and the finance committee. It's entirely possible, I'm directed, to reshape it to what it was in years past. I think that would be unfortunate because the reality is, this was admittedly by the authors in 2019, meant as a punitive effort against the administrator in 2019. Well, to really mess up pronouns and all that, he is not I. He is not me. I'm not that guy. And then we had pandemic, and then we look at a capital outlay reference and chapter in the charter that we can debate what is an amendment and what rises to that level in joint meetings with the board of selectmen and a meeting with the chairman of the capital outlay committee and I. The bylaw charter review committee, back in, I believe, September, opined that that's not the intent, and they weren't looking to do that. So I don't really know who's going to challenge this, other than there could be some challenge of some sort that the moderator will have to sort out in 134 days. See how I snuck it in there? And so for me, it's unfortunate because my effort has simply been to update, to manage, and to present. And in an effort to create greater transparency, we're now looking at a plan that's going to be hung on a technicality, when at the very same time, the capital outlay chapter in the charter defines capital outlay as $50,000. Not below, not above, $50,000. I challenge anyone other than the line that deals with the beautification of the villages to find any line item that matches that precise definition. So recognizing that town meeting is the greatest expression in a representative democracy of the voter's intent, what are we doing? And what do we plan on doing? Because I have every confidence and faith that what the department heads presented, what the capital outlay committee vetted, and what is presented to the town is a very accurate, and I would hope clear depiction of what we need to do years going forward. So if we're talking about a procedural weapon that was created in 2019 and never fully finalized, then that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a parliamentary weapon.
I guess the question, Don, how do we fix this? And who needs to be involved to fix this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think it's tonight, but there's an awful lot that we just said that I need to unpack because I truly object to the characterization that it was a got-you moment for the prior town administrator. I was a chair of the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, and what had been a fixed plan for the public to understand what their future liability was became a totally chaotic year-by-year budget where there was no plan. Every year, we got a new five-year plan, which was completely changed. It was an attempt to try to create some order and go back to what we had been doing for 30 years. So all I can say is it was not that. It was not about you're not him. It was all about the plan itself. It needed to be restored to what it was, which we did. Now, the $50,000, I'm not sure what happened because it was a second amendment to that. It was clearly a threshold above which you had to do something and below which you didn't have to do something. It's not... I think it's glib to say that it's designed for only $50,000 items, nothing above, nothing below. It was a threshold so that we weren't going to be sitting talking endlessly about $8,000 and $15,000. It was about a definition of capital. It began at 50. If the language doesn't say over any longer, it should. It's $50,000 or over. It's that simple. It's a durable thing that you're trying to buy that is a capital item. But it was not punitive now. It's not punitive now. It wasn't punitive before. It's about a plan, not a person.
Thank you. So I'm not that interested in looking backwards. I'm interested in looking at this 134-day timeline for a town meeting and who needs to be in a room to have a conversation about what makes sense and what doesn't make sense and what the intent was. What does that meeting look like? Charter bylaw review? Town administrator? Somebody from the board of selectmen? The entire board of selectmen? Capital outlay? What does that meeting look like, and when are we going to have it? Because where do we need to digest more? Because quite frankly, this didn't do anybody any favors or whatever action, and I think we need more clarification. And I'll go back to a statement made at town meeting last year. The town elects us. We then hire a town administrator, and I would hope that there's a level of trust in what goes on. And if this doesn't allow for a level of trust and something that makes sense without 30 meetings and/or 50 motions, then we need to fix it. So what does that look like?
I'd be happy to be part of something because I want something to go to town meeting and get passed with not a forever filibuster. This is the first year where we... Because last year, I thought we put this to bed last year. We were at town meeting, and we said, okay, seven years, five years, seven years, five years. We fixed that. And I thought that, okay... And also, we didn't have an opportunity to create all five years fixed in stone in the prior year. That was a mistake of timing because Joe should not have been... Had that thrown in his lap. But we needed to segue back into a real five-year plan, and we didn't have that. So, and apparently, we only really were concentrating on the first year. But last year, I thought we fixed it. I'd love to be able to have a solution, get everybody in a room and say, okay, this is what we can do this year. Don't particularly want to reinvent the wheel. Don't want to see this completely torn up and start with something completely new, but I do want to get to the point where we can identify, all right, where do we have a problem here? And how do we get around... How do we get to fix it and move forward so that next year, we're not talking about the same thing again?
And I certainly appreciate that. And, you know, to Joe's point about the $50,000 in the charter language, clearly, that's another charter change that we need. So charter bylaw should be involved in this discussion. Joe, thoughts on a meeting with capital outlay chair, a representative from the board of selectmen, and the chair of the charter bylaw review to try and iron some of this out and bring it back to the respective boards?
So I think, Mr. Chairman, if I'm being asked, I think it's an appropriate conversation between the bylaw charter review committee and the board of selectmen. Capital outlays... Excuse me. Water. Capital outlay committee's done their work. They evaluated, I believe, 84 individual applications that create the five-year plan that you see in the document in front of you. Again, this is a procedural matter whereby the successor bylaw charter review committee, which I believe was reconstituted within the last year from members that some were present in 2019, that started on this endeavor and then quit. So I think you will recall the public record shows that I've asked for several years that there be a bylaw charter review. So this is really, to me, a question between them and this board to decide, are they going to object to the capital plan that presented based on their understanding of the charter?
Thank you.
Now, Michael, can I join that as well?
Larry?
He wants to be part of...
I'm going to make it a joint meeting.
Good, okay.
So full boards, and I'll talk to... Joe, I'm going to put that on the, probably, the next agenda because I really don't see the point driving this out. Mary?
Can you just give me the 10-cent description of what the controversy is? Because I'm not getting it.
Don?
First of all, what it's not, it's not that the dollar value changed. Because if something was listed three years ago, and it's now bubbled up to year one, which means that we're going to do it. The amount isn't the thing. It's that, okay, we were going to get a maintenance shed, and we're going to get this or that. But now, all of a sudden, there's a this or that, a maintenance shed, and something else that just slid in that wasn't any part of last year's plan or the year before that's planned. This was supposed to be a stability document where you... As a financial document, you would wind up... Remember, we don't do this every year. The plan is supposed to be, the first year from last year goes off because we voted on it. Everything moves up, and we add a fifth year. And then everything just keeps moving in order as a perpetual motion machine. It's not an academic thing because we have to vote on it. To me, I take this as a promise to the public that there's a process. It's not about trusting the people in the process because we come and we go, town administrators come and we go, but the plan was always that stable. And you're only adding one year, the outer year. It doesn't matter to me, but I started looking, and I didn't have time this week, I'll be honest with you, but there's differences apparently in each of the years, and I don't know how substantive they are because there's no crosswalk. It doesn't say, okay, this is different. Now, we use like three items instead of two items. It's a promise that we make to the public that you're voting on this, and it's a stability thing. You can bank on it for the next five years is what our borrowing is going to look like absent an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Joe?
If it helps the board, the relevant section of the charter is Chapter 9, Financial Provisions. Under Section 6, it is the capital outlay. Subsection 9-6-7 reads in its entirety, "With the exception of petitioned articles, any article submitted for the annual or special town meeting warrant, which requests a capital outlay as defined in Section 962, but which is not included in the current year of the capital outlay plan as adopted by town meeting, shall require approval of the capital outlay committee, the board of selectmen, and the finance committee, and any such article shall require a two-third..." require a two-thirds majority vote of the town meeting." So my perspective is that does not comport with the request this evening to compare the two documents. But that's one person's opinion. And this was adopted by vote of town meeting under Article 36 in 2019.
Thank you, Joe.
Martha Donovan East Harvard, a member of the capital outlay committee. So while I totally respect that it is an honorable thing to want to have a fixed plan out five years so that taxpayers can understand what to expect, in my humble opinion, it, we're setting ourselves up for failure because things change. We've added two new department heads. I'll give you a couple of examples. We added an IT department head and a cultural affairs department head. And they looked at their budget, and they came to us, and they said they needed things to do their job. I mean, if you're running on electrical cords in town hall and you need systems and PCs and security to make sure that somebody can't come in the back door of the IT system and steal your data, those are important things. It's just like, we didn't plan to have a pandemic. We didn't plan to have supply chain issues. We didn't plan to have inflation this high. You can't plan all of these things. We know that we have wastewater out how many years, but we only have Phase 3 in the budget because we don't know what Phase 4 is going to involve and what it's going to cost in the future. So I appreciate that we want to be able to have a stable plan, but the reality is that life happens, you know? I wanted to seal my driveway this year, but there was construction outside. I couldn't do it. I wanted to, you know, put shingles around my house, and there was a shortage on the Cape. It doesn't work the way you want it to work. And so I think that by having to have this discussion every year at town hall, at town meeting, we're just going to set ourselves up for, for an argument that doesn't need to be. It's a plan. That part of the, of the document, year two through five, is a plan. What we're asking the town to approve is the budget for the current year. And yes, it's a planning tool, but it's not, it shouldn't be set in stone. So that's my opinion. And I think we're, we're really going to set ourselves up for failure if we, if we kind of work it the way it is right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Joe?
If I could, one more thing for the record. And I thank Ms. Donovan, not only for the comments, but for the service on the capital outlay committee. Because I've reminded the committee that what they're doing, what I'm doing, is all regulated by our charter. I don't think it's any surprise for the five of you that I've said many times that we need an overhaul of our charter because there are so many disconnects. And again, when you approach an important chapter such as financial provisions in a piecemeal fashion, as was done in years past, you're going to have disconnects. But to the question earlier about who should be involved, I want to just read from Chapter 4, Section 3, which is the chapter known by me to be my job. It is the charter provision on the town administrator. And 432 outlines the duties and responsibilities for anyone serving as town administrator. And under 432, Clause C, it says, "The town administrator shall develop and annually revise the capital outlay plan in consultation with the capital outlay committee." Now, when you look at the capital outlay committee on Chapter 9, it says they should assist me. But the key points here are develop and annually revise. So again, the charter is disconnected. The question remains, on this parliamentary question, what are we doing?
Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no disconnect. There's a mechanism to accept the changes. And the two-thirds vote is that mechanism. Nobody's putting a brick wall up that says you can't do anything. Nobody's saying that you need to be perfectly capable of predicting five years out. But I have a job description, too. And it demands that I either vote for or against the capital plan. And I can assure you, in its current form, unless we can resolve this, I'm not going to vote for it. I mean, if it's a simple majority, I'm going to recommend people vote against it. I don't want to do that. I think, my responsibility is, there's a charter. You can parse words all you want, but it had worked for 30 years in the manner that it is now put back. And there was no controversy. It went to town meeting, things changed, got two-thirds vote, things moved forward. We managed to be able to muddle along as a town for a generation and a half with the language and the built-in conflicts that we're talking about. It still requires the approval of the Board of Selectmen, and that means each and every one of us. And the town actually asked for the votes of everything that we vote on for articles rolling in the town meeting. We have responsibilities. You have responsibilities. I'd like to be able to do that in a meeting or in a room, wherever, before town meeting because it's going to be a long meeting otherwise.
It's going to be on the next agenda, and all I can say is think I will go into weekly. Julie, did you have something?
I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate the comment about the working document because that's the way I've always looked at it. And, and I personally, you know, again, in my opinion, it's always been the majority position that you liked it the way it was previous. I personally don't. I think it is a working document, and I think that, just like we all have our own lives and as it was relayed, you know, things change and things happen. And there's no reason that I need to look at last year's capital plan and say, like I'm doing now, whoa, wait a minute. Why is this different than, you know, this wasn't on? Well, I know why now there's something new on because I've heard about it here, right? So I personally think it should be, it's a plan. It's not a policy. It's a plan. And it amends and it revises. And if these are now our priorities, they're our priorities. I don't think we need to look backwards, so.
Mary?
Julie said it best, as did Martha. It's a plan, and plans change. So, yeah, if we need to have that meeting to not have an overnighter at town meeting, I'm with you. Let's make that quick.
Yeah, and I would just start to gather thoughts on changes to the way that this capital plan has been written or the policy on capital plans, as Don's outlined it.
Okay.
So that we have some information and then any changes or an article related to changes on the capital plan. We obviously changed it 2019. We can change it again by majority vote at town meeting, so. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find it professionally necessary for me to add to your record this evening, perhaps a qualification of my remarks. At no point in my commentary this evening on this topic was I engaging any one of the five of you in direct conversation. Rather, what I was trying to do is offer my frustrations that I've expressed, I think, many times over my tenure, coming up on three years here now, and the inefficiencies and the errors, quite frankly, that exist in the charter. And so while I make a reference to the charter responsibility, it was in no way meant to engage a member about your role as selectman or your job description as it was stated. For me, the issues are quite clear. There is a provision that was added three and a half years ago to the charter that has not been tested and is now being suggested in such a way as to be tested. For me, as a former moderator, I would say that the question is for the moderator. And what is the purpose of 967? How is it to be affected? And what role, if any, does it have to the draft plan that is currently before the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen? So again, I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to engage in direct dialogue with any of the five of you. I'm trying to offer information for your benefit on the record.
If it's worth anything, I didn't see you doing that.
Thank you.
Larry, we're good?
We're good.
Don?
Hi, sir.
Okay. Moving on. Finance Committee suggestions and recommendations for 204 Sisson Road. You all have that in your packet. We tasked the Finance Committee in our joint meeting to have the discussion about some of their comments. They had a lengthy conversation and submitted what is in your packet. What I'd like to see is, is the board look through their suggestions and see what they want to do and what they don't want to do. Ultimately, it is our decision, not the Finance Committee's decision. Their recommendations are important, and I'm sure that they're going to make them on town meeting floor. But I disagree with several of them, not all of them. But we have the suggestions we look for. We could vote as a board to ignore the entire request if we want.
No, I like your first review and comment.
Yeah, so I would, I would look to bring this back with board feedback, not just another general conversation, but board feedback on individual items on that and then get to a point that night when we can vote what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. The night of the meeting, the joint meeting, there was conversation, it was individual conversations, but one member of the board alluded that there'd be $10 million worth of expenses. We're asking for 1.9. I'm not sure where the 10 million comes from. Each individual member of the Finance Committee that's involved in this seems to have their own numbers and doing their own homework. We, as a board, are asking for 1.9 million.
Could I get a qualification? You used the word board. You went committee.
Committee.
Okay. Because I don't recall anybody at this table saying 10 million bucks.
No, Finance Committee. I apologize. One member of the public that was on Finance Committee last year stood up and read an excerpt or a piece of, maybe in its entirety, an advisory article that was passed at town meeting. I went back and watched it. There was a lot of debate on that article. In that article, it was said that we can spend it or we don't have to spend it. Town meeting voted it under those pretenses. A lot of what's being asked by the Finance Committee and by other members of the public, Joe's already gotten. Do we really need to hire an architect to draw a plan of what the inside of the building looks like and then assign those to people now? Or is the plan that's already been done and provided in the Finance Committee's packet enough? And again, this is a municipal building. The Board of Selectmen are controlling that building through the town administrator. We are using it for department heads. Do we really need to outline as much information as the Finance Committee is asking for? And I know one board member wanted a more refined plan, and I'm hoping to get from him to Joe what he's looking for rather than Joe spinning his wheels with the department heads that are working on that building. I think our asks have been well-defined. I think our town administrator, through the department head that's over there, has done an excellent job building a plan. And how much planning and picking things out of the air are we going to agree to do? Comments? Julie? Mary? I haven't started you yet.
Well, thank you. I'm going to quote Mr. Hughes. "I am flummoxed and even perplexed as to why, why the Finance Committee wants to have a business plan and a strategic plan for one of our buildings." We've got, I don't know, what have we got, Joe? 10 buildings?
At least.
And we don't have plans for any of those buildings like this.
Mark, do you want to sit? I recognize you, but I'm going to go through the board first so you'll be standing awhile.
I'll be brief, Mark. You know that. So I don't get what this is all about. It's a municipal building, and there's something in here about the board shouldn't be clouding the discussion with tearing it down or having it for affordable housing. We already resolved that many meetings ago. This is a municipal building with a cultural aspect to it. I don't know. Some of these are great questions. Be a fabulous term paper for someone to do. But we've just hired a cultural director who I happen to think is pretty sharp. I've read her resume. I know what she's done at some other institutions. I don't want to slow her down to have her write a term paper. So that's my 10 cents.
And the only thing I'll add on the cost of tearing it down, that was brought up by me. What the Finance Committee hasn't done is looked at the cost of doing nothing. And that is a very real number. So we can, we can scrutinize what the board has done and what the town administrator's done all we want, but provide a cost of doing nothing, which Joe did last year, at least for the insurance level. So.
Right.
Julie?
So on that point, you know, there's, there's numbers out there that aren't mentioned, and I give them credit. There's a lot of information in there, and some of it's helpful. Some of it is regurgitation of things we've previously discussed. But I, I think, again, I'll use the analogy of, of the capital plan. To me, you know, it's, it's not something that we have to go hardcore and assign anything more than what our director, who's just been recently hired, is looking at and the opportunities to bring in there. I don't really see, I understand the need to look at the monies. I also think, to the point of, what would, what would it be if we did nothing? But also, why in the world would we not be looking at the opportunities for that building and improving it? It's a town asset. We could never build a new building for $2 million, let alone what it would cost to take it down, not to bring that back up again. But I don't really see the need for this, these architectural plans, this fixated focus on who's going where and what's happening. I mean, again, it's a building that's got a lot of growth potential. Why would we lock it in? It goes back to the capital plan and things that come up and things that change. Leave it flexible.
Thank you, Julie. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I want to start out with one of my famous sarcastic remarks. It's not as if we've ever had a school building we just closed up and never did anything with and then said, somebody should do something with that someday. That would never happen here. A couple of notes. That building is two, three years newer than this. I mean, it was renovated, everybody keeps calling it the middle school. It was the high school. It was a high school, it became a middle school. It got completely rebuilt, and it reopened in 1991. So it's a newer building than this. And yet, before, we started taking action to fill it up with something, when everybody was just, it should be this, it should be that, we should do this, we should tear it down. No, we should put affordable housing in. In the meantime, they didn't close it up right. And it is, it's not an exaggeration where it was a dank, dark, moldy place where pipes were leaking. I mean, it literally looked like we were willing it into the ground when we finally opened the doors again. It was disgusting, and we should look ourselves in the mirror that we had ever let something like that happen to a building that was just, it wasn't offballed, it was just closed. I mean, it looked like everybody couldn't wait to get out of it. We've put stuff in it. I mean, it's, it's clear that, that there was a need for it because people have started to clamor for it to improve. There's, we've discussed, and Joe and I have discussed through the years, that, you know, it should, it has the possibility of having some, if not all, town hall activities in it, which is something we haven't discussed, and still have cultural activities. I mean, it's, it's a robust site. It's essentially located across from the public safety facility, which could form a beautiful municipal complex, got tremendous amount of parking. But more importantly, it's open. It's functioning. To say, let's put together a business plan to see if we want to open the building, well, that ship has sailed. It's, could we come up with a business plan? Yeah, except that now some of what we're discussing is different from what we were discussing. We're putting a couple of department people in there. I have no problem with doing that because I think that the more we actually fit that, outfit that place out so that it has a multiplicity of uses, it's a really nice building. That it needs a bunch of stuff is a testament to what we always do in Harwich. We build something new, and it's new forever. We don't have a plan to maintain stuff. By the time it got vacated, literally, I mean, if you walk through it today, you'll still see textbooks and some stuff where the people who were occupying it as a school couldn't get out of there fast enough. They left Dodge, and they didn't take everything with them. So I hate to be snarky about it, but I mean, the building's open and it's, it's successful. I mean, how successful do you need it to be to put some investment in it to make it more successful? It is an asset. It's a municipal building. And right, we couldn't build that. I mean, looking right now, looking at what it costs for Monomoy to be built, I mean, we'd be looking at like 40 or 50 million dollars to build anything there now. I'm not even sure we could build some of what we'd want to build. So given that fact, improve the damn thing. I mean, make sure that it's a welcoming place and that we're cognizant of the fact that it's not going to be a muddy pit, but we need to do certain things to make it work better.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that this is suggestions from the Finance Committee, not, we don't have to accept them all, we don't have to accept any, or we can accept some. So the next meeting really is going to be to nail down what we want to accept. So the next meeting really is going to be to nail down what we want to accept and vote it as a board. So come with your suggestions so that we can do that. Larry?
Yeah, I've been the ones arguing, negative some on this, but I initially argued for affordable housing there. I thought that was a great location. That, you know, was passed the town halls recommendation and we, you know, it cut down. But I, I agree, all, all those discussions have gone by. I don't care to talk about that. Tearing the building down, that's not a discussion worth having. But at the same time, I have difficulty looking at architectural plans at this point when it's a moving target. And so what I've been arguing for, and I think Joe, I made this comment the last time when we hired the cultural director, is that I want to be sure we're looking at what are the potential opportunities before we do a lot of things in there. Over the years, we've talked about various things, you know, and she talked, talked about culture events. Why are we set up for that? Is that what we want to do if we link with another center? Is, we talked about test kitchen. Is that something we want to do? I want to have those discussions. I don't think that's a long discussion and a lot of time to reach out to our neighboring communities and say, okay, we have this center here, how's that, how does that work for what you're doing? Can we make it more efficient, draw more people in? I think we're making mistakes if we, and so I, I don't want, I think the real mistake is to put in concrete architecture plans. That's not what I'm after. I'm after we reach out and see how can we make it the best way it should be at this point. I've argued things in the past, but that's gone. But just make sure we, we use the asset to its full advantage.
And, and rather than go through me and then risk any chain deliberations, Larry, because you were very specific about indirect costs and costs.
Right.
And I think that the report that the town administrator provided us through Eric Beebe and the Director of Cultural Affairs spelled out a lot of that with some growth potential, with some of the things that you're talking about.
Right.
And, and the capital plan, which Joe pointed out tonight, right now it's just a plan sitting in front of us. We haven't, we haven't gone through the merits of that or voted it.
Right.
But if, in his plan, it, it spelled out, if we do this, we can do this. And if we can do this, we do this. And, and having started and sold many businesses, we can, again, pick, and some continue to ask me to put together business plans and to add things that don't exist without doing some other things. And, and this isn't a Fortune 500, 500 company. This is a town asset and a municipal building that, that is now being used by a lot of people and enjoyed by a lot of people with tremendous growth potential because of its square footage. We need to build it. We can, you, if, if, and I've said it to pass people on the finance, if you want me to pull things out of the air and make up a business plan that may come to fruition in two or three years or may not, anybody can do that. So will you please just, outside of what he already gave you, give Joe some direction on what you as a board of selectmen want? And that's more important to me than what the finance committee is suggesting right now.
I'll do that because I don't want to turn a business plan into a negative term. Well, I'm, and actually I ask, as you know, the indirect costs from all our operations. Because I find that for us not knowing all the expenses, I don't know how we make rational decisions.
You've been very consistent.
Thank you. Because I don't think that, you know, we're, we're not business. We, we don't make the same decisions. You know, we don't, we don't expect the library to make a profit. We don't expect, but I think if we're managing a, an organization which the town is, we should know what the, what all the expenses are, including indirect. So I'm consistent with that across all departments.
And, and I do think, again, Joe presented us with a document that had a lot more meat and potatoes in it than we're being given credit for.
Right.
And as, as a board member that has consistently asked, I would only ask that you look at that and you give Joe a, a sense of what you want. And then when we meet next, we can make some actual decisions. Don, then I got to go to Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to end up saying something that like, surprise the people here, but as far as I'm concerned, moving forward, Joe's not going to put together a plan that's going to albatross around his neck. He's not going to design a building that's going to be a money pit, that, that he has to work on every single year to be able to make ends meet, to keep open. I, I have confidence that, that the decision-making is aimed at what we're asking it to be aimed at. So to that end, you will not be getting any input from me because I'm satisfied that we're the hands that it's in, or the hands that it needs to be in.
I've got one yes vote for next week. Joe, I know, Mark, I said Don, then you, but I've got to call on the town administrator first since he presented the report. Do you have anything to say or add at this time? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Kelleher, West Howard. I'm on the capital outlay committee, I'm on the finance committee, but I, I just want to speak as myself, as a taxpayer. And I do remember at last year's town meeting, we said we'd put together a good capital plan. And I think the facilities department has done an excellent job really bringing to the fore, there's some, a lot of maintenance items that have been delayed in that building. We're at 1.9 million now. My point is, we've got a major construction project with that building. And every condo association that I've ever managed or whatever, we get a reserve study. We go out and get a consulting engineer and they put together a study. And that's the point I want to make. We have a major building there. I do think the costs are understated. I think it's quite a bit more. And I think it would be helpful for the town, even for town meeting, if we get a professional engineering study, it's called a capital need study, that will lay out all the costs of the building, perhaps five, 10 years forward. My wife worked with all the major contractors in Eastern Mass for Eversource. She gave me the name of Palmeroy Associates to speak to. They don't do capital need studies, but she, he gave me the name of GDD Associates and Russo Bar Associates. Russo, Russo Bar Associates is the project manager down at the Elders Library. A small project like that, they have, they got a capital need study, they have an engineer overseeing that work. And there's another company called GGD. My point is, that's a big project. I think we need professional, and by the way, they can do a reserve study for, under the procurement amounts. They mentioned, I just mentioned a 68,000 square foot building. They can do it for under 30,000. And that would help, I think, the board to make decisions, to go in front of town meeting and say, this is what we have. And these are both companies that are very reputable. So I'll just leave it at that. I think this is a major construction project. I think we need professional help. I think Link and his crew has done a tremendous job, but they've merely just highlighted how much of a big job that is. And I do think, I'm not as a negative on that building. I think it has great potential, but you want to do it right. And you can only do it right if you get professional help that delve with these projects throughout the whole part of the state. One more last comment. We're going to put a furnace in there. Maybe with some engineering help, you could look at a different way to heat that building that would also provide air conditioning and give you year-round use. Thank you.
Mark, if you could, will you email me what you just said with the organizations as well as a resident, not as a finance committee member?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And the only comment I'll make on, on some of what you said, Mark, and is, we have a fellow by name Sean Libby. And Sean Libby, in my mind, is a genius. And, and Link certainly gives him credit for being a genius often. Sean Libby walked that building with the capital outlay committee and town administrator, and I believe you were there yourself. Sean Libby made recommendations to make up that number that we have. And it's not a major construction project. It's an existing asset of the town, like any other asset of the town that we continue to put money into and that we will always have to put money into, like Brooks, Brooks Academy. Look at what we're spending there from deferred maintenance. Everything that we're talking about doing to the old high school, thank you, Don, now is, or 204 Sisson Road, was spelled out in a report in 2011. But the powers to be in 2011 decided to ignore it. And we didn't do the maintenance. It's catching up on us now. But we're not talking about construction. We're talking about an existing asset. We're talking about getting it to the next level so that we can continue to bring things in, continue to grow that, and to spend the money on the building that we generate in the building. And I think we're losing sight of that. And it strikes me that the finance committee and past finance committee, committees are so focused on that building, but not focused on the building that it rains in the library, there's mold in the clerk's office, or was, I think we mitigated that. And is in, and we can't open the curtains in the town administrator's office and it's in horrible condition. So there has to be a certain amount of visioning for future of what we may need for a town hall. And, and I particularly would love to see us save and invest in that asset.
You, you forgot heat and cooling distribution within the building.
But I still am going to defer to Sean Libby's expertise and what he told us what we need to get to where we need to get to, to get to the next level as a department head that took the time to walk it with all of you. Go ahead.
Martha Donovan again. I just think, and I know people aren't going to like this, but we need to take it in phases. You know, there's so many other things going on in the town. And I'm sure if the taxpayers saw a bill in that building that was $10 million, just to put a number out there, that's overwhelming and then we don't move forward. So if the first phase is to stabilize the building, if you will, with the, with the capital projects and to get the cultural and recreational part of it underway, and then maybe phase two is to improve more on the capital side and, and then maybe it's the vision and maybe it's the greening of the building down the road. I think taking it in bites like that is going to be much easier because town hall's going to come into it, or the library's going to come into it, or something else is going to happen. So again, it's kind of that flexibility thing. It's my suggestion.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
John Chori. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. 100% what's been said tonight. That building is a wonderful asset. It's got tremendous potential. How many times do we hear potential, potential, potential in that building? Tremendous potential. What we don't have and what the townspeople voted on was Article 57 in last year's town meeting. Tonight, a couple articles were mentioned at town meeting that you're acting upon, on collective property taxes, which is a very good one too. That's something we pushed for in the finance committee and you're acting on it. This building needs to be acted on in a responsible way. A responsible way was Article 57. A working group, which I guess is the next agenda item, was never formed, in my opinion, never formed. The information I've seen so far has been draft information, in my opinion. I have not seen an extensive capital list. The report I did see listed one year of capital expenses of close to $2 million. This building needs at least a 10-year capital plan. I trust Sean Libby's knowledge emphatically. I need to, love to see a 10-year plan. Also in that, what I'm calling, that the draft proposal on the cost-benefit analysis of 204 Sisson Road was a reference to a comprehensive development plan that the cultural director, Ms. McKinney, I can't say her last name, but put together. I have not seen that form. Is that on the town website, the comprehensive plan? That's referenced in the, in that cost-benefit analysis?
I'm not, I'm not going to get it on the records, but Jelf, do you have an answer to that?
I have all the backup material that I used relative to my report.
Thank you.
I don't know the reference to the speaker, but I'll go back and look at it.
Thank you.
It's, it's, I can show you. It says, it mentions comprehensive plan that she developed. I'd just like to see what that comprehensive plan is. Because those comprehensive plans are going to have dollar amounts attached to them. Again, I support this bill. I'd love to see it come to fruition. But to operate on a year-to-year basis on a maintenance, if that building, is wrong, in my opinion. There's tremendous capital expenses in that building, tremendous. I outlined, I sent each member of the finance, I mean, the selectmen's memo on March 12th last year on 21 capital items that I'd like to see numbers attached to. Please put numbers to that 21 items and I'd be a happy man. I'd also like to see a working group that's on the next agenda formed. We've only got 164 days, Joe?
34.
34? 34 days.
Technically 133 at the hour.
By the time I get done, right? So that's it. I, again, I support this building 100%. I was over there on the Christmas stroll or whatever you want to call it through that building. Tremendous participation by the towns, the townspeople. That's all. I'd love to see that working group on the next agenda item formed, and I'd like to see the, the comprehensive development plan for that building. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you can reach out to the town administrator for, for the comprehensive plan you're looking for. As far as your list of 21 capital items, John, with all due respect, that's your list of 21 capital items. That's not Sean Libby's list of 21, and that's not something the board has agreed to or even discussed. Moving forward, you've got to remember and take Article 57 in, in context. That was a heavily debated, long debated advisory article. And we did clearly state to the public, we can spend the money, we have it in the revolving fund or not. So it was never said that we were going to do that, and it was never said that we were going to get to the, to the, to any 10-year plan whatsoever. Matter of fact, we're going in reverse and we're going 10 years back and trying to get caught up from what was recommended 10 years ago. So you're probably not going to get everything you're asking for. What I'm asking the board is to look at the suggestions from the finance committee and come back and see what they want to do. Right now, that building is under the care, custody, control of the Board of Selectmen. And we voted to use it without asking for an extension or without even internally voting for an extension until the end of 2024. So we still have another year on what was our test. And I would, I would argue that our test is going well, but for people to just continue to say what they think the capital needs are when our professional is saying quite different, it's just a statement. Go ahead.
Good evening. Bernadette Waystack, Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council, also a tenant in the building, also a teacher for 20 years in the building. So to that remark about getting out of Dodge, just so everyone knows, they literally told us we had to pack up the last day of school while we rangled a bunch of middle schoolers in the heat and the 87 moving boxes that I packed. And we were never allowed back in that building. We, we could not go back in the building. So you're right, Don, there are some things still hanging around in there. But that's on the school, I guess.
It's not on you.
And Larry, to your point about the kitchen, all that, and I've heard you talk about you want regional, I want you to know, Ms. McWenney has already kind of become the lightning rod for the whole region, from Provincetown to Buzzards Bay. She's already been in touch and people will look into her to kind of marshal a whole regional thing as far as culture on the Cape. And getting all 15 towns on the Cape to ever do anything regionally, as we all know, is quite impressive. It's just a start, but she's already come over in five months and, and been, you know, pinpointed for that.
It's good to be a leader.
Yep. Mary, I really appreciate your remarks because I was thinking the same thing. We don't ask to have a business plan or anything for any other building in town. But I think that goes to the fact that it seems like a year ago, what I kept hearing a lot about was people convinced that it's going to be a money pit and wanted to know about sources of revenue, which again, we don't ask the library for, we don't ask other places for. But it will be a source of revenue. And the target, especially is the auditorium right now because that's going to be the first and biggest place. But as far as that, yes, it'll come. And I, what I would want to say publicly is I'd invite Mr. Hughes and any other members of the FinCom or anyone else. I don't believe they've ever gone over to visit Ms. McWenney's office where since day one, she's had a whiteboard with her one month, her three month, her six month, her one year, her three year, her five year plan. And while they may not have concrete numbers attached to them all the time, that's not necessarily on her either. She does answer to someone else, but she has a plan and she has experience in doing this with the town of Plymouth. She's done it before and she'll do it again. But if people are asking some of these questions, I keep wondering why they're asking them when all they would have to do is go stop into her office. She doesn't even have to be there. They could just look at her whiteboard and they'd see some ideas of where we can go together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? All right. So two weeks on this one, not next week. Two weeks we're going to bring this back. Don's already given his comments, so I only need comments from three of myself. Next is the discussion on a working group for 204 Sisson Road. At the joint meeting, somebody brought up the conversation of the discussion in the public meeting prior to town meeting about forming a working group. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to have a working group more than what we have right now? And if so, what are your suggestions? And I'll start with Larry.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just a point of order.
Go ahead.
If the board develops a working group, it may be construed to be a public body. Rather, you know, there, there could be some discussion as a thought process where you rely upon the administrator. So, what may be helpful is if you folks talk about any validity in that. But we do walk that fine line. If you direct it, it may become a public body.
And, and that was part of my comment as, as to outside what we have already, which is the administrator working on behalf of the Board of Selectmen with its department heads and then bringing it back to the board, which you have done. So, that caveat, and your caveat. Larry, thoughts?
No, I'm, I'm careful with what we are. My direction, of course, is, as Brent has said, be sure we're, we're exploring all our options.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate what Bernadette said. And she and I have talked about this in the past. I'm not a stakeholder. I don't deserve, or, forget deserve. I'm only going to muddle up things if I become part of a working group. It really needs to be the stakeholders in an interface with the town administrator's office to have a vision and then have people that can put that vision into play. What, what possible value could anybody on the board have in that discussion? Because the, the future of that building really rests with the cultural activities and possibly more government offices, but none of that has anything to do with anything that we have any particular expertise with here. So, I, if you have one, I don't want to be part of it.
Similar to fertilizer.
Similar to fertilizer.
Mary?
I remember that meeting before town meeting, talking about that at length. And I do remember the one thing I kept going back to is, let's wait, because we don't know if we're going to get our cultural director or not. But if we hire a cultural director, we don't need a working group. We'll have an employee that will do that. So, I'm with Don. I don't want to be on it if you're going to have a group.
Julie?
Ditto. I want no part of the group. I think we need to let the, our director and our town administrator and those who are vested take hold.
Sounds like an RSVP for a really bad party.
And to, and to the point about, about the working group, we have, we have a town administrator, we have a department head, we have another department head, we have stakeholders. Finance Committee and Capital Outlay have been included from the beginning on these conversations. Sean Libby through Link and Hooper, we have a working group. And nobody's been excluded. Nobody has not been given information. The difference is, the town administrator is bringing it back to the Board of Selectmen before everybody else gets it. And I'm, quite frankly, against, I think we have a working group. If anyone has any suggestions on how to broaden that outside of what we're doing, I'd be open to them. Anyone in the public? Moving on. Contracts, motions?
No discussions or... I add motion that the board vote to approve a three-year contract for municipal solid waste disposal with CMAS partnership. The acceptance fee for the first year of the agreement would, would be at $106 a ton. And the following two years should be subject to increase according to Consumer Price Index as outlined in Appendix A of the contract.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, I just want to...
I think you raised a point last time.
I did.
Who signs it?
I'm going to call Link up. Link, do you want to come up and tell the whole board what you told me at the beginning of the meeting? And that would be related to Article One, certain definitions and acceptable facility waste, which was my question.
Yes. Prior to the meeting, I talked to Rich Connor, who is the New England Marketing Manager for Cabanta, DBACMAS. And I said, Rich, this defines solid waste as the, as being generated within the confines of Harwich. His response was, Link, this hasn't changed since the last contract. We don't care. And he's aware that waste comes from other, other places. Because the way that the commercial works is haulers set up routes that don't necessarily abide to town boundaries. So, they are aware. He could care less about it. I think that's what I told Mr. McCaskill prior to the meeting.
Exactly.
Could I mention the rest of my motion?
Go ahead.
Since I'm looking at it, for the board to sign in the amount of $1,157,000 as a contract sum?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And that was part of Don's original motion, so it's not a new motion.
Oh.
So, the original, the original second would be fine. Any questions for Link or any further comments?
No.
Link, the only thing I would say is, I don't understand why they wouldn't just strike that.
I...
Generated within the boundaries of Harwich by residents. I understand what you're saying, but to me, that is a giant opt for this company if they don't want to take our waste. And it's poor language at best.
I don't disagree. I believe this is actually a holdover from language that was in the original Waste Acquisition Agreement that was 1987. So, there was language going back as far as that. But there's been, there was another three, between when that expired and the three-year, we, we just ended. The same language was incorporated.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for doing the work on that and bringing it back. I appreciate it.
We all remember that well.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Four one. Thank you, Link.
Thank you. Hope you all have a great Christmas.
You as well. Next contract.
Move that we vote to approve as a board and authorize the chair to sign the fiscal year 2023 Local Cultural Council allocation contract.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign that we approve the fiscal year 23 firefighter safety equipment grant award. I've got one quick comment after that.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, Don?
Once again, my hat's off to the Fire Department. They do the most aggressive work at trying to make sure that the taxpayers aren't paying for everything and that they're always mindful, they're always helpful. And I certainly appreciate it. So is everybody on the board.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, David Blank, Fire Chief. I just wanted to talk about this briefly. This grant has been around, Chief Peterson was, was chief when we got it for the first time. So, it's been around that long. It's come and it's gone. Its funding's been available. It's usually been a set amount grant. This year was $19,000 that we were eligible up to. The difference with this year from previous years is that it was competitive this year. So, whereas every town was eligible for a chunk in years past, they raised the amounts and then they, they made it a competitive grant. Firefighter Tina Reagan, Deputy Chief Thornton, both worked tirelessly coming up with the numbers, developing this program. I can't say I'm thrilled with what we're buying with it, because the need is certainly, is something we would all hope we didn't have to have. But the ballistic equipment is integral to our work with the Police Department in the ASHA protocol, which is the active shooter trauma situation, where we're actually putting firefighters into harm's way, that warm zone, while the shooter's potentially still active. So, my, my appreciation to them is immeasurable. They do a great job and we keep getting these grants. Another good news, the grant that we had heard we weren't going to be eligible for, the, the federal grant, they supplemented it with more money. And we've been back for review now and it's being reevaluated in Washington. So, there's a good chance we're going to get that one as well. So, just keep doing what we can do and try and lessen the burden on the town. Thank you for your support.
Please extend our thank you to your team.
Will do. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Town administrator's report?
Very briefly, but very sincerely, I wish everybody a very joyous holiday season and best wishes for a happy, healthy, prosperous new year. See you in 2023.
Selectmen's report, Julie?
I don't have anything.
Mary?
All set.
John, Don? John, Don?
I feel like I'm back in an episode of The Waltons. Anyway, I'm going to go the other direction because I believe that everybody has the ability to celebrate in their own way. Rather than happy holidays, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, a joyous Pass, not Pass, or Hanukkah. And whatever you might celebrate or not celebrate, I hope you have a peaceful and joyous season.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
I can't add to that.
Motion to adjourn.
But John boy.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.